Like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Douglas will lead us in the invocation and Mr. Van Meter will lead the pledge.
Travels for everyone. Ready for safety also. Hidings. Aid both our local and our national.
Amen.
Pledge your allegiance to the United States of America, Republic, and One Nation Under God. Dismissed. Every day.
Before we begin tonight, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variances requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioner for final action on April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. You wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meetings, see please, please see Ms. Staylor to obtain a request to speak for them. Any requests with a public hearing will have a minimum of ten minutes permitted per side for the presentation of opinions, data, and evidence by proponents or opponents of a request. The applicant will be allowed to speak first and any member of the public may speak after. Repeating the same grievances is not necessary tonight. It's once something has been stated, you know, after it wants, we will stop at that. Okay, there's no sense in beating a dead horse. Okay. First item on the agenda, excuse me, we, uh, we do have a quorum. I need a motion to, for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Chairman, make a motion to approve the minutes from previous.
All in favor? It'll be. Need a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Approved. Okay, the new business tonight will start with Westlake Commons and Ms. Mystery.
Yes, sir, this is an architectural review at one thousand Westlake Commons Drive, one point, five point acres. The current zoning is P U D and the project is a retail restaurant building with two pop of uni, pop up units. The architectural review is because of a zoning condition that requires the planning commission to approve elevations. This is the location in front of Westlake. Zoning for the P U D. And a close up of the aerial. This is the development plan and you've seen the previous buildings before and approved them. The current building is the, the main building for retail and then two pop up structures for fast food and retail. This is a original rendering on the bottom there and the site photograph on the top, which is the finished building. And some more site photographs. And if you have crossed the site where the new retail building will go. These are the building elevations and the style and materials are similar to what's been approved before. It's going to be bricks, stucco, metal, architectural glazing panels and metal canopies. Four sides of the elevations. And the perspective views of the building as well. These are the pop up structures that were located around the roundabout. Staff is recommending approval of the review.
Anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor?
First three items are not public.
Can I get a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the architectural review for the retail pop up buildings at one thousand Westlake Commons Drive.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Jordan Family Dentistry, Ms. Mystery.
Yes, sir, this is another architectural review for four forty West Haven Court, three point seven acres and the current zoning is P one professional with a zoning condition also that requires the planning commission to look at the elevations. This is the location of the site on the east side of Williamview Parkway. And the zoning is P one professional. And the aerial and the first building built out there is the preschool. This is the approved site plan for this dentist office. And this was the elevations that you approved before for the preschool in two thousand twenty. These are the elevations for the dentist office and it's in the same traditional style with brick and hardy board. And these are the renderings that show similar style, neutral colors. Staff is recommending approval.
Motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the architectural review for Jordan Family Dentistry at four forty West Haven Court.
I second that motion.
All in favor? Carries. Green Point North Section One, Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir, this is the preliminary plat for Green Point North Section One off Apling Harlem Road. Is the location of the property on the west side of Apling Harlem Road. It is part of the Green Point North Planned Unit Development. Specifically, this is part of the mixed use section of this development as we can see that this section includes one hundred and twenty-eight residential lots. You can see they are color coded here. The different colors indicate the different types of residential use on these properties. This includes single family, two family, fourplexes, and townhomes on these lots. This section also includes a village commercial section, which you can see around the green there in the, well, kind of west area here. These lots may include some flats in addition to the commercial development on these parcels. And then there are six standalone commercial lots fronting on Apling Harlem Road. All of the residential lots are accessed via private alleys and the building setbacks are small per the PUD to encourage a more walkable type of development. Generally speaking, the required building setbacks are ten feet from the public right of way, twenty feet from the rear or alley right of way, and six feet from the side property lines. Sidewalks and street trees are provided on both sides of the public roads and several park areas totaling three point two acres of open space are provided throughout the development. There is a thirty foot undisturbed buffer on Apling Harlem Road per the PUD. The remainder of the site is internal to the larger PUD, so there are no buffers at the perimeter of the rest of this section because it abuts other sections of future development. And staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat.
I get a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommend, approval recommendation for preliminary plat for Green Point North Section One on Apling Harlem.
Second.
All in favor? Approved. Now begin the public hearing. If you do wish to speak, make sure you come forward and state your name and your address that we can get that in the minutes. Your on temporary use authorization, Mr. Douglas.
Uh, yes, sir, so each of our temporary use authorization applications tonight are all by the same applicant. They're all affiliated with the Augusta National Women's Amateur Tournament. So I'm going to present all five and you guys can vote on them as long as that's all right with everybody.
Sounds great.
All right, so our first application is for the property off Champions Parkway. You'll see it's got very high acreage. This is actually the golf course property back in Champions Retreat as illustrated here. This is the zoning, it's within again, the, the Riverwood PUD. Again, it's the property for Champions Retreat Golf Course. This is the applicant's breakdown of where the temporary structures will be. As you can see, there are hydration tents, restroom trailers, temporary scoreboard towers. Again, each of the temporary use authorization applications that we have tonight are affiliated with the Augusta National Women's Amateur Tournament. They are only intended to be in place for a couple of weeks compared to how temporary use authorizations that we normally present that would be in place for a year. So these structures pictured and illustrated here on this site would only be in place for a couple of weeks. Uh, this shows again additional TV towers, restroom trailers, up near the front part of the golf course. Our next application is for a property off Champions Parkway. Uh, it shows here, it's kind of the interior space on the roundabout shown that's kind of cut in half by this property line. It's own PUD again, being in the same development. And this application is for restroom trailer and an office trailer, two office trailers affiliated with the operation of the golf tournament. Uh, this application is for seventy Champions Parkway, I believe that's the maintenance lot. Yes, it is. This is the maintenance area for the golf course. This is illustration of the property. Again, it's owned planned unit development. And, uh, these are temporary structures like open face dumpsters and radio repeaters affiliated with the operation of the tournament here at this location. Uh, we have, uh, this is the only application that's offsite away from the golf course or outside the development of, uh, the Riverwood Development for the Champions Retreat area. It's for forty-nine forty-five Hardy McManus Road. That is Grace Baptist Church as illustrated here. It's zoned S one again for a church. And this is an illustration, the, uh, the tournament is going to utilize this location for employee parking. They will shuttle their employees then to, you know, onto site where they will be helping with the operations of the tournament. The temporary structures here are a shelter for the shuttle area, an office trailer and a restroom trailer for the operation of this site. And then finally, we have, uh, unzoned property here within the, uh, the planned unit development that we've already been looking at. Again, it's, uh, this is an illustration of where the temporary structure might, is intended to stand with this application. You'll see on the next slide, although everything surrounding it is own planned unit development is the same part of the development, this property is unzoned as its right of way, however it is privately owned right of way, and the property owner had to provide signature for the application, so they're all right with this temporary use authorization. Again, it's a twenty by twenty security tent, security checkpoint for the tournament. And staff is recommending approval of all these applications per the layouts provided by the applicant.
Thank you. Any in the audience that would like to speak out in favor of temporary use authorization? Anybody in the audience that would like to speak against the temporary used authorization? I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the temporary use authorizations outlined by Mr. Douglas.
Second that.
All in favor? Approved. We're at South Bel Air Road. Butler.
Uh, Sheriff's, a request for rezoning at one seventy South Bel Air Road for eight, eight point four acres from R two to a split zone C two and C C proposed car wash and also commercial uses. This location of the property on the, on the east side of South Bel Air Road immediately opposite of the intersection of Oakdale Percol and South Bel Air. Shows current zoning and current zone R two, most everything around it to the north and to the east is on R two as well. Across street, you have some P one and P D, P D D and R two. And then further south has some C one, S one, more C one and a, a C two as well. This is a review of the site. Existing site, again, it is currently vacant. And the plot of the property. So this is the same property that we saw, um, basically a year ago with Parkers. Uh, similar to that request, um, there are, there is some requests for C C on this. Have it from this area here, uh, but the main request is the C two here on the front, for the front end of, uh, Bel Air Road. Again, we're, we're showing a, a car wash on there. Car wash is required to be in C two, it can't go in C C. Uh, so that's why you kind of have this one piece is cut off and being a different zoning. Uh, the rest of the development is shown as being basically, uh, commercial development. Uh, there are no, there are no users for these properties. Um, and again, this is conceptual, so it's not one that's definitely locked in per se. In terms of the C C, uh, staff is relatively okay with C C. Uh, from a future development standpoint, this corridor is a professional corridor. Uh, it kind of has an upper limit of C C uses. Uh, so again, there is some, some reasoning to approve some of this. Uh, really where the problem arises is with the C two request here and also, uh, this right away at the back of the property. So with C two, uh, within this corridor again, per the vision twenty, vision twenty thirty-five future development map, C two is a, is higher than C C in terms of the intensity. Uh, so staff cannot recommend approval of the C two. Uh, the other thing as well is that anytime there's right of way coming into a development like this, like with Hickory Drive here and the Oakdale Percol extension, staff is going to say, hey, you need to connect these together. It's one of those that that encourages freedom of, of traffic to move, move through an area. So we're, we're going to advocate for that. Again, as the, the other side of that is that when there is opposition to that, it's up to the planning commission and our board of commissioners to say no on that side of things. Now, the applicant has shown this right of way here. Uh, they are not showing a connection through, they've shown a right of way that would be, if this were approved, would be essentially given to Columbia County, uh, for us to connect in the future. From a staff standpoint, that's not good enough. It's one that we would want the road to go the whole way through. Um, so for, for, because of that, because we're not showing the road going through the whole way and the request for the C two, which does not meet, uh, division twenty, twenty thirty-five, staff really cannot recommend approval of the request. Uh, there has been some comment for, or some, some, um, a request by the applicant, uh, to limit uses on the, on the development, that would be to take out a convenience store with gas pump, basically for the C C section here. They'll take out convenience store of gas pumps, um, tattoo parlors, also vape shops. So again, they have said, hey, show a good faith, we're happy having a condition to limit those uses, y'all have that before you. Um, again, staff has already kind of made our, our decision on this, our recommendation on this. Again, in terms of future development, this is on the professional corridor as it's shown here. Um, and it does, it is surrounded by, by neighborhoods, uh, but again, the corridor itself goes through the, through South Bel Air Road. Uh, so basically if you touch on, if you touch the, that, that corridor, that's kind of where that works out. And again, it's one that C C is the highest, highest classification. Now, like I said before, there is some C two in the area. Uh, we'll probably hear the applicant mention that. Um, again, C two is historically been overused in Columbia County. Uh, it's one that C C is more, should be more prevalent on a corridor, C C, our C two is more for your centers of Evans, your interstate, um, uh, interchanges, it's for the, the big uses. Uh, but again, it's one that over time, we kind of use it as a catchall and that's why we have a proliferation of it. Again, due to all of that rationale, staff recommends disapproval of the request for rezoning from R two to C C and C two proposed car washing and other commercial uses on the subject property. That concludes staff recommendation.
Thank you. The applicant like to come forward and state your case.
Good evening, um, my name is Brandon Graybill. I am, uh, one of the applicants, this is my partner, Christian Wall, um, at our address.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, thirty-six oh three Burning Tree Court, Martinez.
Four oh four Abritway Evans.
Um, I'd just like to share with everyone, uh, on staff or the commission, Christian and I are both local to the Augusta area. We both grew up here, lifelong residents. Christian lives in Evans, I live in Martinez. We started a brand called Moby's Car Wash about two years ago. Opened up our first wash in North Augusta, South Carolina, um, when the site presented itself. Uh, we've been open a little over a year and our philosophy from the beginning has been we want to be the Chick-fil-A in the car wash business. We want to run a tight ship, we want to be organized, we want to be clean, uh, we want to provide washes backed by the best in customer service possible. To date, we've got about a hundred and fifteen Google reviews and I think all but three or four of those are five stars, so I invite anyone to, to, to check us out on Google or, or come check out our wash. We've been looking at this property for a while. Uh, we're actually excited when Parkers got turned down because we thought it, uh, gave us an opportunity to come in and, and do a Moby's here. Again, we live in Columbia County, we want to bring our business to the county. We feel like we've got a great operation and this site fits what we like to do. As you can see from the site plan, we have pushed the car wash in the front corner next to what is the Dollar General Retail Shopping Center next to us. And beyond that, you've got, uh, a new storage facility and then the next parcel would be a Walmart Neighborhood Market. Kind of interesting that a car wash, uh, is not allowed in C C, but a twenty-four hour convenience store is with gas pumps. Christian and I have gone basically door to door, uh, with each of the residents that surround this property to just kind of listen to their questions, their concerns. On top of that, we had a neighborhood town hall meeting this past Monday. There was about forty or fifty people in attendance. Uh, a great meeting, we heard from all the neighbors and their concerns and I feel like ninety-nine percent of what we're hearing is we don't want a gas station and we do have concern with the road connecting. For our project, we don't have to have that road connect. If the county says you've got to have it connected, then we will connect it, but I feel like that's going to be the case for anybody that develops this property. So I would just respectfully ask that we look at this as far as the zoning and the road being almost a separate issue because I feel like, again, whatever this property gets developed as, whether it be residential, commercial, professional apartments, whatever it is, um, I think the county is going to make that decision on the road regardless of, of what takes place. But I will say that a majority of the neighbors that have spoken out are not against the car wash, they're against the road connection. So, um, other things that we've talked about are, uh, the buffers, uh, we've got a thirty foot buffer, um, on the backside and the side where Hickory Drive comes in. We've agreed to do a privacy fence. Um, I think the neighbors want to see an eight foot fence instead of a six foot, we're willing to do that. Uh, we plan to landscape and fill in the gaps just to create a further buffer, uh, from the residents. And again, the only reason we're asking for C two on the front corner is because that's what allows a car wash. A car wash isn't allowed in, in C C. Um, the rest of the project would be C C and, uh, most likely be retail, maybe some medical office or, or whatever type of use, uh, comes into play. The reason we did the site plan as shown is because the county said, hey, show us hypothetically what this may look like so, uh, the neighbors can see what am I leaving out?
I think you all are in a, in a tight spot because staff is handcuffed by the twenty thirty-five comp plan, but then we get back to Will, it was, it, it allows for a twenty-four hour gas station, but not a car wash and, and we're only open eight to eight all the way in the front. I think the closest house is over three hundred foot away and I just, I would ask you all to look at that and consider that as, as this is an exception, um, to the normal.
Just, just to add to that, I, I think, you know, hopefully, uh, some of the neighbors or residents will come speak after us, but I think going into this thing, uh, you know, there was a lot of concerns, they didn't want anything or they wanted to, uh, not see a gas station, but as we do with every project, we go out there and pound the pavement, we go meet the neighbors who are going to be affected. And as we told them at the meeting, we will be transparent and we will accommodate wherever possible. If we can't, we'll, we'll let you know that too, but I feel like we're willing to go above and beyond to try to accommodate the neighbors. As Will said, we're willing to eliminate a gas station from being developed on this property. A couple of other uses that came up were tattoo parlors, vape shops, and so we're willing to eliminate those too. We've got more green space than I think is required and again, we're willing to, uh, put up the privacy fence and do whatever we can to, uh, make the neighbors happy.
Thank you. Anybody would like to speak on, in favor of this? Rezoning request, if you'd like to come up and speak, come up and state your name and your address, you're in favor of this?
Jonathan Crawford, eight eight four Willow Lake, Evans, Georgia, three oh eight oh nine. I'm speaking on behalf of the family and just wanted to get a little background and the history of this property. I represent the Proznack Estate, their mother lived on this property and, um, she passed away in two thousand seventeen. They, shortly after that, she passed away in January of two thousand seventeen, they took it to market in that following May. I represent a lot of the area, I tell you, they're, they're only a handful I, I feel bad for that it's taken so long. Uh, you know, we've had a number of challenges from a zoning perspective and it's hard for me, being a commercial real estate agent, relaying those challenges and explaining, I mean, they have a eight and a half acre parcel that sits at a signalized intersection that gets thirty thousand vehicles per day while we're having such a challenge on getting this property rezoned. And we understand everything's not so black and white. I, I commend the applicant because, um, I will tell you, when we went through the Parker's rezoning, it put us in a six month moratorium, we did not want to go down that road again. Brandon reached out to me shortly after, um, that moratorium had concluded with his interest on the property. And I tell you, we took three or four months before we even replied back to him. And we kind of gave him a directive that if we were going to go down this road, that we really wanted to see, that he was reaching out to the neighborhood, to staff, checking really all the boxes, because like I said, we didn't want to be put in this position again. Like I said, the property, we've been trying to sell it since two thousand seventeen. I have to commend Brandon and Christian, they've done just that, they've met with staff, I've met alongside them, they organized the town hall and so they really have, they went door to door, um, a few, a couple of weeks ago, sent an entire list of all the addresses and the people they had spoken with and like I said, organized that meeting. So I commend them, I commend staff because they've done a great job of being very transparent in this process and they are kind of handcuffed as it relates to the zoning ordinance. Um, I think we would all agree that the gas station, which staff recommended approval for is a much more intense use, the car wash that we're looking, that's carved out in the very front two acres of this parcel right up by the intersection. With that being said, you know, there's a vision twenty thirty-five plan in place, it is what it is, staff has to look at it, you know, black and white and of course, we deferred the planning commission and board of commissioners to that gray area when we step outside of that. I know that vision twenty thirty-five plan is constantly evolving, you know, it recommends a professional corridor here. I can tell you, you know, we're a development company as well, where's, where's spec office being developed in this market? You know, the last one to be done was the legacy building just down the road on Bel Air and it's seventy percent vacant, you know? Things evolve, things change. We, they mentioned residential, you know, there's, you're not going to have dense residential on that spot, so it's a commercial site for all intents and purposes and, um, you know, I think there's an agreement there, it's just simply the nuance, this fits in this C two classification and so we've got to look at it a little bit differently. I, I would like to end on the fact that I was at the town hall meeting, um, a few nights ago with staff, some of the commissioners were present. I sat there and just listened. I'll tell you, one thing I made a note on, it was, um, an hour and twenty-five minutes before we heard the first mention of the actual use, which was the car wash. All the concern was tied to the road connection. I know there was a comment regarding the tension pond, something about mosquitoes and I'm sure we'll hear that from some of the residents behind, um, as it come up after me, but, um... With that being said, the, the car wash was not the concern and that's what we're here for today from a zoning standpoint. To approve a C two use, C C around it, C C was not an issue from day one, it, we had that approval twelve months ago. So I agree with the applicant, we'd like to, you know, focus on, on what's in our control. The connection is not in the applicant's control, it's not in the seller's control. They don't need it, but they're willing to work with it or without it. And, um, we'd like to focus, as I said, to be on the zoning in hand and kind of go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Get a couple more people that would come up and speak out in favor of this rezoning?
I'm Linda Blackstock, I live at six thirty Meriden Court in Fox Run Subdivision in Martinez. We were very outspoken about having Parker's Kitchen because it was a twenty-four hour essentially truck stop. Whenever Mr. Graybill and Mr. Wall came around and, uh, talked to us in the neighborhood, they had their development plans with them, they showed us everything they planned to do, they answered every question I had. I had a lot of questions because we'd gone through this a lot before and, um, I felt like that what they're, what they have proposed to do with this big thirty foot buffer at, uh, behind their property is wonderful. I've watched, I've looked as I walk, go out the subdivision in the back and where the storage buildings are being built and everything, it's a, it's, the trees are just very sparse and you can see everything and I realized the elevation is lower for this area that they're going to be developing. But the fact that they are willing to put a fence and that they're willing to add greenery there so that we don't have that, what looks like a, a raped forest behind us, uh, is wonderful, but I think they're far enough away. I, I think that they have an excellent plan for us and I do not have any, any qualms whatsoever in saying that I'm fa, in favor of that being zoned C two, I realize. Awkward, out of the ordinary part of it C two, the rest C C, but, um, knowing these people, and I did not know them until they came and visited me the first time, but just the dealings I've had with them, I've talked to them on the phone, I went to the town meeting, I trust these people. I feel it in my gut and I think I'm a pretty good judge of people. So, uh, just, that being- So, just, that being said, I feel like that we should be able to zone that parcel of land C2 and that it would not really affect our subdivision that much as much as the entire area was going to be whenever Parker Kitchen was planning to do it. So, I'm just in favor.
Thank you. Thank you. Somebody else would like to speak in favor of this rezoning?
John Blackstock, six-thirty Meriden Court. I belong to the redhead. Judgment of people, I don't know if she is not after these years. I was at the town meeting also and watched her, how they laid out everything. That wasn't good enough for me. I mean, it was good, but I made a surprise visit to their North Augusta. They, I sat there in their parking lot watching things come and go and I watched how the workers did interact with the other people, like a lot of businesses do. Seemed like it was just something a little bit more special. Then I went inside and asked whoever's in charge, who's toting all the keys. Brought out a manager, Billy, and talked to him a few minutes. And I fessed up what I was there for. And I said, told them I thought it was nice what they did and they interacted with the customer. But I still think it's going to be good for this neighborhood with the thirty-foot buffer and the retention pond all laid out. I know it's going to be, oh, you're going to hear it over and over and over. But I'm just saying, I'm echoing what my wife said, that we're pleased with the neighborhood or to something different. I was a wooded lot. Progress is coming. I'd like to see this progress go from here. That's my two cents.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Let's get one more, if there's one more person in favor of this rezoning?
Barbara Britton. I live at one-twenty-five Hickory Drive.
East Fadney, forty-one-twenty-five Meriden Drive.
Everything's, I know it's already been said. I had spoke with both gentlemen also about the privacy fence. And they said that normally at six feet, saying it again, so it would be on record, they're going to eight feet, which is another additive. We're all for green space. We know something's coming there, it could be a lot worse. Unless we have drug issues and everything else and businesses that bring that in, we don't. They seem to be aware of this, and they seem to be making the marks that will prevent this. Other thing, again, I don't know if this is the time and place to talk about the Oakley Perkley going into the neighborhood. Can I bring that up now, or should I wait?
Please do.
Okay, okay. Here we go. On both sides of the exit, they are going into the neighborhoods. There's two houses that sit there. Their driveways go into where that exit would go out of. Right across the street, there's a rows of houses. Their house sits right there, it's going to catch all the lights and everything else. When you go there, you have to turn right, you have to turn left. So, you're standing there thinking what to do. Let me point out that none of the nine neighborhoods around this area, which is from Bel Air, Columbia, Flowing Whales, over to Wheeler Road, none of them have sidewalks. People are with their kids, they're jogging, they're running, they're walking, trying to walk their pets, riding scooters, whatever else. There's nothing there. We're already dodging traffic because people know that neighborhoods are raceways. Speed humps have become speed blips, that's all, because they've gone from, which I've already tried to fight this one on. We had them in our neighborhood, they were six inches, they dropped down. I wanted them raised. They rewrote the policy where, nope, four inches is fine. So, they just ripple when they go over. I don't like them, but I don't like speeders. I'm afraid somebody's going to get killed. Adding more traffic going out, the traffic that comes from people coming home on Bel Air Road and starting to, they're waiting, they're waiting, they're waiting, they're waiting. Bad accident on Bel Air Road before we got up here. They're waiting. And they go to the red light at Bel Air and Columbia. They're waiting again. Nobody wants to sit still in the car, even if it takes a few minutes longer to go through a neighborhood. And they will, speed humps, curves, it doesn't matter. That just screams, don't do it. Don't make that road there because that's going to destroy the neighborhood. It's going to bring the value down of the houses. Also, another fear is those houses that sit there at that exit is that they're going to get tired of it. And business people know this, have traffic all the time going in and out. They're going to say, because after the stores close, the road is still opened. So, what's going to happen is business people are going to come knock on their door and say, aren't you tired of this? Don't you want to sell your property? There it goes, and the next one goes, and the next one goes, and across the street goes. We will lose our neighborhood. That's one of the quickest ways to tear down neighborhoods. And like I said, there's nine neighborhoods in that circle.
So, you're kind of in favor and opposed?
I'm in.
In favor of?
In favor of this, but not the road. That is our, regardless of what happens. I even asked the gentleman, just in good faith, I said, the back property, because I know they're more concerned with the car wash, of course, than the one right across, across on the left-hand side, more so than the back. I even asked him, I said, okay, you see the yellow strip malls? What if you put one right across where the so-called deemed road would be? Just make a long one, and you have plenty of room to park. But that will enhance the fact is that this is a barrier. That would not be a road at any term.
Well, thank you.
The fact that the road would just make a huge impact on our neighborhood, the car wash. You know, it's the, something's going to go there. And we think that this would be a better thing than some of other things that might be in the process. Or that there's people waiting. Take that up if this one fails, so we'd like to see this.
Thank you.
I live in on Hickory Drive. I'm parallel to Bel Air Road. So, I'm already seeing what happens because what happened is traffic when they come this way or this way would turn on. They'll turn in Holly to avoid the wait. Turn in Holly, and I know they're outside traffic because you can watch them. They don't keep going on into Fox Run, Spring Lakes, Porter Brook, Hill Brook, Quail, all the other neighborhoods. What they do is they turn on my street. My street is actually almost like an alley. If you park two cars together, you can't go through. You have to wait. Traffic comes through, they go around, and then they go to Columbia because they're avoiding the traffic, vice versa. I see them come from Columbia, they come up, they hook that corner, they come down. I watch them when they get all the way down to Holly, they don't turn into the neighborhood out to Bel Air Road. So, Hickory Drive is a Bel Air secondary auxiliary road, to say the speak. Opening that road is going to multiply it. Unbelievable with what traffic will be coming through. Oh, there's a light, let's go through here. I'm tired of waiting, and it's just, it's going to be a mess. Look, I'm already experienced, I have for fifty years, I've been there almost fifty years. I've seen it go from, you know, Bel Air, Columbia being two roads to four roads to everything else. Well, five, count the suicide lane now. But it's, it's, it's a mess waiting to happen. And it's going to be a bad news if somebody get hurt.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone here that would like to speak out in opposition of this rezoning? Okay, there's no, would you like to speak in opposition? Come on up and state your name and address.
My name is Paul Gentry. I live at six-seven-one Clinton Way West. I know everyone's speaking about the extending the Oakley Perkel extension. And of course, I am against that. My main concern is, and I heard Mr. Butler earlier say, that problem that I'm having is that eventually it will. Is that still, I mean, is that still on the table at all, that eventually it might be voted in?
What's that now?
That, that, as of now, if they build there and completely develop that land, that eventually it will turn into a complete road. Or is that, is, did I hear you correctly?
So, if the, let's say this thing moves forward with the recognition of approval, there could be a condition put on the whole property that that road will never connect. That's there forever. So, basically, it won't, it will not connect if that condition is there.
Okay, and then I spoke to one of the gentlemen who called me, okay? They said they were not in opposition of a fifty-foot buffer.
Is that correct?
Those are my main concerns. We don't want, we saw what happened to the people at Walmart on the Forest Drive and with the people with the storage units, and we just don't want that happening right there. If we could completely hide the businesses, street lamps or parking lot lamps, I would, I would say, you know, for light pollution, then other than that, I would have no problem with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anybody else would like to speak in opposition of this rezoning?
James Redmond, two-hundred, two-sixty Metal Lake Drive in Martinis. Been there forty-six years. My concern primarily is the effects of traffic. Because down Oakley Perkel Road, right now, there's a school being built. When that school is completed, that will compound the traffic problems that exist in the area now. And further development across Bel Air Road will, again, compound that development. So, my, I concur with the planning staff's disapproval, primarily because of the effect of traffic in that area.
Thank you, sir. Got one more that would like to speak out? Come on up.
Living in the Fox Run subdivision, kind of beating a dead horse, I guess, but same, same problem. With the traffic in the area is also, you know, a problem. Opening up the Oakley Perkel Road, I think most of the news are just against that. Car wash, no problem. We don't need extra traffic there.
Thank you, sir. Guys, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend disapproval of file RZ-two-four-oh-four-oh-one rezoning from R2 to C1, CC and C2 at one-seventy South Bel Air Road.
Second. All in favor? Motion carries. Appeling Road.
Yes, sir. So, our next application is for eighteen-ninety-two Appeling Harlem Road. That is currently in a roughly eleven-acre parcel. But as we'll see with the application, it's actually just a portion of that parcel. And it's for S1 rezoning for a dog training facility. This shows the location of the parcel. Again, you'll see in a second a concept plan that shows that it's just a portion of this parcel that's up for the rezoning. It's just north of the intersection of Appeling Harlem Road and Columbia Road, just south of Coyote Creek. This shows the zoning of the property. The property's currently zoned RA. Again, the application is for a portion of the property to be rezoned to S1 for a dog training facility. This is aerial of the property. As you can see, Coyote Creek runs along the northern edge of this property. The area in question for rezoning is the southeasternmost portion of the property. This is the existing site. This is a plat for the property. And this is the concept plan. Again, this is the parcel, but in the southeasternmost corner is a roughly three-point-five-nine acre parcel that they're intending to subdivide off of the existing parcel, again, for development as a dog training facility. They show a driveway into the property. They're future building outdoor training areas for the dogs. The intent is for a fifteen-dog maximum at this site, communicated by the applicant. And as you can see on the development plan, there's a pond for the dual purpose of stormwater retention as well as training water dog breeds. Beyond that, you'll see there's a forty-foot buffer shown on the concept plan lining each lot line, including those along Appeling Harlem Road. There has been a G-dot approval letter just for the subdivision of the property. There will continue to be G-dot reviews as Appeling Harlem Road is a G-dot, a state-owned road. And there was a letter of approval, or a letter of support from the applicant that is across Appeling Harlem Road from the proposed site of this development. Again, the maximum occupancy for dogs would be fifteen dogs. And the dogs, the business is intended to operate between the hours of seven AM and seven PM. So, no dogs will be outside of the building. They will be kennelled from seven PM until seven AM, according to the S1 narrative, which is binding, seeing as S1 uses are use-specific. This shows the future development map. Again, it's in the, well, it's in the rural neighborhood character area. So, seeing that, that commercial uses like this aren't typically allowed in this future land use area on the future development map, that's why we offer the recommendation that the applicant pursue a S1 rezoning. Again, so it being an S1 rezoning means that it doesn't have a range of uses like we were talking about with the previous application where, you know, gas stations can go in some zoning districts and not others. This lot, if this application is approved, the only use allowed on the lot is the dog training facility. And without a rezoning application to come back, they can't increase the capacity of the business either. So, they are capped at their capacity unless they come back for a S1 revision and have review from both the planning commission and the board of commissioners at that time. Considering all these concerns, there were also concerns for the waste disposal. As you can see here, a condition that's proposed is by the health department that this site have to connect to the public sewer system as opposed to be on a septic tank to, again, mitigate any environmental impact. Beyond that, there were comments submitted from our environmental compliance department speaking to what kind of plumbing and drainage system needed to be installed with this lot to ensure that no dog or pet-related waste would, again, negatively impact the surrounding environment. Additionally, our staff has included a condition to recommend, requiring the new plat for the subdivided property that we've been talking about be submitted to the planning department as well so that we can ensure that that lot, that the rezoning coincides with the formation of a new plat so that there's not a split-zoned property. So, given those conditions, staff is recommending approval of this application.
Thank you. Turners like to come forward and?
Oh, thanks for your time. I'm Stan Turner. I'm the current owner of the three-point-five-nine acres that we're talking about. And also, I'm the current owner of all the property around that. So, I don't know if that means anything or not. This is my son Cody. He's the owner of Cody, Cody Creek Kennels.
Cody Turner.
He's the owner-operator.
Five-five-seven-nine, whatever.
We're lifelong residents of Appeling. Well, I moved there thirty-seven. Cody's a lifelong resident. We love Appeling because people care. So, just saying that, we're going to put dogs first, going to put the clients second. Neighbor's right there with it. Building's going to be soundproof, completely contained. These are not your average dogs. We're talking about, Cody's a high-end dog trainer, nationally known. So, he gets top dogs in there. Those dogs come there to go to work and not bark. When they do bark, they're going to be inside that building. They come out of that building, there's, they don't have anything to bark at. They're not going to bark at their handler because they know better. They've got that trust. So, right currently, the facility is in my backyard. This is a much better layout, a more long-term solution to this business model. There's probably five houses closer to the current facility, closest house to this one. Current facility is not even indoors. And soundproof. So, we just asked for your approval. We, we've had a lot of good comments from neighbors, had a lot of discussions with people in the area, a lot of people in support. Brought, brought the army, but. Anyway, any questions?
We have a question. For the, this future building, so any, anything you're planning on doing in the future's already been annotated on?
has already been annotated on this lot?
No.
With the S1, I think you have to come back if it's not, right?
Your building is not annotated. In the application, it said lands. There's a future plan to maybe plan for a building. It's not anything that's in the works.
Okay.
That'd answer your question. So that would require, to build an additional building on this 3.59 acres would require an addition, soundproofing.
If I'm understanding that correctly.
Okay.
So again, on the narrative...